All right, we've returned from a short recess and now we've come up to the next spot on our agenda. Our guest speakers address the board tonight. And guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk at 704-262-6238 by 12 noon on the Friday prior to the meeting. Individuals addressing the board may speak for three minutes and persons representing a group may speak for five minutes. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the board and also for their cooperation in presenting the information within a timeframe allotted. The following guest speakers have requested to address the board at this time. Bradley Burnett. Is that right? Yeah.
Bradley Burnett.
Burnett. I thought that was a R but I couldn't. That's why I had to put these on. I'm so sorry. Bradley Burnett. And, thank you.
Thank you in advance for allowing us to just do a small, short presentation to you. My name's Cynthia Burnett and along with my son Bradley, who is an eighth grader at Harris Road Middle School, he'd like to submit an idea for your consideration. It's regarding Meatless Mondays.
Okay, so, we come here today to inform you about something we want to get into Cabarrus County schools. It is called Meatless Monday. And what we do on Meatless Mondays is we try to save money and the environment and encourage students to make healthier food choices by limiting the amount of meat we use on Mondays to zero. And by conserving meat in our local areas, we can do many things such as make less change in the environment and we invest less in raising livestock and we also consume less meat. So that requires less money to raise and let alone we conserve meat so we can have more meat in the following days and save money at the same time. Now, we should have Meatless Mondays because they provide us with better choices and they also play a part in fighting diabetes and foodborne illnesses and can even lower your risk of cancer. And because of the lack of meat, there is less meat used and therefore costs less and we can save money for better uses like education. The significance of this is it's more beneficial to the environment because we're saving less meat and it requires less land and cattle feed that we use to raise meat in the first place. It also encourages students to make healthier food choices instead of, say, having a hamburger or going through the fast food line every day. And it also is less harmful to the animals and we use less of it and we just generally spend less on it. And that can do many things for us. And other people are also participating. There are several schools in our country and counties around us that have started this act as well, one of them being Chapel Hill of North Carolina. Kansas City Royal Stockyard is one of the major meat-producing stockyards for the U.S. as their beef has become a way of life in Jackson County where the meat is produced. And even though they are one of the major meat producers, they have started Meatless Mondays in all the schools in Jackson County. And this says a lot. If they are willing to abandon their main export for the sake of, for better of the worse of their children, then it shows that if they can do it, then there is no reason why we can't. And it's a win-win situation.
Thank you Bradley. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We do offer Meatless every day.
Yes.
So we do try to do that much and Dr. Probst has assured me that if a child or a student decides that they don't want to eat meat, then we will help them out with the right proteins to help them in that way. Thank you again for your presentation, sir. Our next guest speaker is Ms. Aileen Monroe.
I am here this evening to address you, to call attention to the lack of adequate compensation for the hourly paid employees in this district. I believe there are well over 1,000 of us on the payroll whose titles are too numerous to mention at this time. With little to no pay increases since 2008, inflation rate of eight-plus percent, increases in health insurance premiums, it should come as no surprise that people are struggling. In this district, we talk a lot about data-driven decisions. Since 2012, I personally have provided data through personal conversations, emails, and handwritten letters in an effort to raise awareness of this issue, hoping that publicly speaking would not be necessary. In June 2013, I emailed county commissioners a link to the entire salary study after one commissioner stated he had never seen it. I never received a response from one commissioner and the salary study was not funded. It was also not funded in 2014. In March 2014, I mailed a personal letter to this board, again, providing data with pay structure since 2008. I provided data again this past Friday when the annual update was released by the North Carolina School of Government for county salaries in North Carolina. I submit to you that morale in this district has never been lower and people have never worked harder. Bound tightly to a time clock, hourly employees have no perks to speak of. Many of us are 12-month employees, so there is no summer break from the demands of the job. Hourly staff are the most impacted by inclement weather days when school facilities are closed and we are not able to work. And thanks to the hourly workers who clear the parking lots so others of us may come to work. Every title in this district deserves to be paid at the current market rate, certainly no less than our counterparts who work for Cabarrus County. Absent state increases, several school boards across the state have approved bonuses for their employees as a gesture of appreciation of their hard work and goodwill. There is abundant proof that employees who feel valued are happier, more productive, and more loyal. Before the current budget cycle ends, locally and at the state level, I implore of you to utilize whatever means available to you as elected officials to lobby for appropriate funding to bring all employees to current market rate. Further, take steps to raise awareness that the state pay system is broken. Hiring employees into a pay range that looks good on paper while providing no means to advance through the range is unacceptable at best. Working for a school system in North Carolina should not be a professional and financial liability. This county and this state must do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. The pay issue is a big issue and it's something that we, our board has close to the heart and we really want to address it. And we have again addressed it in this, I believe we may have some ears at our county commissioners, but they're under some interesting decisions ahead of them. But we are working hopefully closely with them enough that we'll be able to get part of this done this year. And we hope we have a plan in place to get it done over the next several years. But we'll see how our budget process works out. We are lobbying for better wages for hourly people. Board members, our consent agenda is before you, 8.1. I'll need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'd make a motion that we approve. Consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And Mr. Harrison, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Consent agenda is approved, 7-0. All right, folks, we'll be moving to our action agenda. This first one is the school maintenance agreement for Cabarrus County Schools, Kannapolis City Schools, and the county. Ms. Kelly Clutz, if you'll come forward just in case anyone has any more questions. Board members, we were presented this last week and I don't know if you've had a chance to go back through any of the changes that were made. If you'll note, the last one, which is the school maintenance agreement fiscal year 1519, 3.3115, board consent, I believe that is the most current.
Were there any changes to that? What were the changes between this week and last? I didn't see anything.
I don't believe that there were any changes last week. I just, I think we put it on the action agenda because there was just some discourse about it.
Yeah, I think on item C under the funding, I thought it'd be helpful to be consistent with the school park facilities and use a, not a number there, a minimum number there as well. I think we talked about $50,000.
Which one were you on?
Number eight, section C. We have a minimum number for the A and B. We don't have anything for C.
So where would you insert the $50,000? Would it be before you go to the sentence, once remaining budget balance reaches 5,000 or less? Would you put something in there? Or would you go up to the, "Outs will be provided, $50,000 to the account"?
I would just be consistent on how it's worded in A and B.
All right. Sarah, do you understand what he's asking? So he wants to word A.
Maybe we could.
Word C, similar to the way A is worded, at least as far as stating the amount that we have in the budget for that.
Can we pick up the language? The Cabarrus Board shall allocate a minimum of $50,000 and then go from there.
Okay.
So would our intent be that we would say, "The Cabarrus Board shall allocate a minimum of $50,000" and will we have a minimum also for the Kannapolis Board of $50,000? Or no? We just want to do just for Cabarrus?
It's just one allocation for the Cabarrus Board.
Right, because we do that.
So it's not an entire year, so are we comfortable with that? Okay.
Is everybody comfortable with that? All right. All right, board members, with that small change, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion and then we approve this agreement.
All right, so Rob made the motion.
I'll second it.
And David Harrison actually seconded it.
Oh, did?
Yes. And so the motion is to make, to approve this agreement along with the changes to 8C, about the $50,000, and y'all will wordsmith that so it's accurate. Okay? All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Your motion carries. We'll go to 9.2. And this one here is the school picture bids for K-8. Dr. Louder, if you'll come forward, please, sir.
And I know we discussed this last week. We presented you with the bid chart and in essence, that bid narrowed it down to three companies and tried to give you and send you the information that we had from that. Based on the, in my estimation, there were three things we were looking at, which is the price to students, the amount of profit that the schools can get, and customer service or kind of rating or recommendation that we could get. At this time, based on those three criteria, it would be my recommendation that the school system go with the Strawbridge Company for the three variables that I articulated last week.
All right, board members. Tim, Mr. Furr, would you like us to make a comment, please?
I was gonna make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All right, I have Mr. Furr with the motion. And Ms.
Carolyn wants to say something.
Mr. Phillips with the second. Any discussion?
I would, now, you're saying go with, but how many years are you wanting to do? Because my, and we're talking discussion, that is a new group. We're not familiar with the group. We've been with another company. If we're gonna go with a new group, even though, you know, I could not go with a three-year contract with it being a new group. I would be okay with maybe doing a year and make sure that we, since we are not familiar with this group, I could maybe go with a year and say, okay, since it is a new organization, and make sure that we're okay with this. I know they've guaranteed the amounts for three years. Go with one year saying, okay, if everything's okay, then we'll go with the remainder two years. One year with the contingency to go with two years, but two more years if everything's okay after the first year. But I'm just real leery, especially with those changing, since we've not familiar with this group. And that's where I've got a problem. If you go with a three-year, I'm not gonna vote for three years with us not knowing. I'm just telling you that right up front.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Anybody else have a comment?
Wouldn't we have a clause if they don't perform an out?
You may have one, but I'm not.
So, I'm good. I mean, it's less for the families, it's more money to the schools. I think if they're gonna walk into this, I think take advantage of that.
Yeah, I guess, and I defer to Ms. Stone, but I would assume that that's all depending on what's in the contract. What I based the, what I put out for bid was what we have used in the past. And in the past, that was seen as a plus to do it in three years so you knew when you accepted that, that it would be guaranteed through. But as far as an out clause or whatever, I guess that's something that the attorneys would work on or develop. But, well, I'm just gonna say, I was gonna say that's not necessarily part of what was part of the bid, but all we asked in the bid was, is, are you willing to hold prices for three years? So that should still be fine.
Anybody else have a comment? Mr. Harrison?
The pricing for the parents and the families and the predictability for income for the schools, to me, outweighs so much else. And I think that kind of stability and consideration that we could give for the parents and the school finance officers and treasurers and helping out their expenses at the school, money like this goes to pave parking lots and other things that the county does not often fund adequately, if at all. And it would seem to me that if we went with something other than, everyone offered a three-year understanding, if I were any one of them and the deal were different, my pricing would be different. So I suspect that that would, you know, actually, you've got a one-for-one comparison going on here, as best as I can tell, from our previous discussions. And I think it's a fair bidding process and the recommendation, to me, is sound. Thank you.
I probably should have added, the one thing I didn't say was, we did, because we, this is a new company, we have specifically not done business. We did call the references and so we got references from six different school districts, all the ones around us, including Kannapolis, Rowan, Union, I can list them all if you want me to, Mooresville, they were all, we all got very good references and said they felt a problem, so I should have included that.
Any other comments? Since this bid was not based on a contract, like some bids are actually, there's terms and conditions that you actually bid on as well, so that they have a chance to bleed back to the legal entities, would there be a possibility you could put something in the contract that would just say, like a one-year probationary period and that we would alert them long before the end of the period to kind of help with Ms. Carpenter's concern?
Again, I haven't been part of the three-year. I'm not sure if Ms. Clutz knows either, but I think so after the bid was done, then I believe there was a contract that they worked on. Is that after they get the bid, then they sign a contract? I assume that's how that is, but I'm not 100% sure. And she's saying yes, so.
So do you think we need to encase this motion with that extra additional language? Or do you think that? Right now, the motion is.
I would like to make an amendment and then you can vote on my amendment. My amendment is to do a one-year contract and then with a, with a option, and if I don't get a second, I don't get a second. My amendment's a one-year contract with an optional two-year contract. How do I want to word this? A one-year contract with an optional two-year.
Two additional years.
Two additional years. Because they've guaranteed us three years with that.
So that would change the terms of what we asked for?
Well, no, they're getting three years, but one year with a two-year extension if they do the one-year good.
What are the terms of the probation? What does probation mean for that year?
If they meet, if they do good, they get to keep, get the next two years, but if they don't, they don't get, they don't get, they don't get it for the next two years.
You went through the vetting process, I mean, that's why we have the vetting process to go through to make sure that these folks have a good track record. Just to hope.
We start getting a lot of complaints and they don't get it the next two years.
Well, okay, so Carolyn has made a motion. Do you want to clarify any of what she's asked? Because she's not sure exactly how to word her motions, so.
Yeah.
I think she's asking for some legal guidance.
Yeah, because what I'm wanting is a one-year, I mean, them just not automatically get the two, I want a one-year contract then, instead of them getting a three-year, because the other guys say, "You get three years automatically." I'm saying you're only getting a one-year automatically and then we're gonna review you after that one year to make sure we're not getting a bunch of complaints, because then if you are, you're not gonna get those other two years.
So the pricing we received was based upon three years? There's a concern that if we return, if we move back to one year, pricing could change?
Okay.
Where it's got, well, it says three years' option. Why, yes. What's that mean?
That they're willing to hold the prices for three years, that it was agreed to a three-year term. I mean, included in the, and I haven't reviewed previously, the contracts we enter into with these companies, but I would be shocked if there wasn't a provision in there in the event of breach, in which case we would be allowed to terminate if they didn't fulfill their services adequately. And so you always do have those regular protections available to you.
So you're saying we can't, we don't have this option to do this?
You can.
Is that what you're telling me?
You can, but they may.
Because if you look at this, some of their prices, I mean, you're saying that that's one of our options, because some of their prices are higher than some of the other people that bid this thing. So we're not looking at some of the lower prices and some of the higher prices. So some of these things are higher and some are lower. Some of the things they are lower on, but some of the things they are higher on. So I'm not giving the lowest price to the lowest bidder.
Carolyn, Sarah, could we get out of this after one year if we are dissatisfied as it's written?
We haven't actually reviewed a draft. Thank you. We haven't reviewed a draft contract yet. We're reviewing the general positions in the bid. The recommendation is this is who we go with, but obviously, the contract hasn't come forward to us. My position is though I would be surprised, once we get the contract written, if we weren't satisfied at the end and if there was failure to perform in accordance with the contract, that we would not have the ability to then get out of it.
Okay. Could we charge you with making sure that language is in there?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
All right, folks, Carolyn has offered an amendment to the motion, the emotion, to the motion, and it's getting emotional. But no, she's, but I haven't received a second, so.
She needs a second.
So she needs a second if we're going to amend this. Okay, well, I think we let that expire. All right, so we didn't get a second to the amended emotion, amended motion, please. And so we have the original motion that Mr. Furr and Dr. Phillips seconded, and that was for the Strawbridge Studios as the vendor for K-8 school pictures for a three-year term effective with the 2015-16 school year. Is there any more discussion on this particular? If there's not, let's go for a vote. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
And that's 6-1. Ms. Carpenter is dissenting. All right, that takes us to 9.3, approval to request supplemental funding from the county commissioners for the Mount Pleasant Middle School replacement facility. Mr. Dave Burnett, please come forward.
Last week, the board asked for us to review and continue reviewing the construction documents cost estimate. We have done that. The construction documents estimate price that we're looking at is $30,743,000. That translates to a construction, I'm sorry, to a project cost of $36,602,000. What the recommendation is, is to forward this request to the county commissioners and the county will review and determine when funding will be available for Cabarrus County Schools to bid and award this project. One of the other requests that the board had was for us to adjust and revise the 60% construction documents worksheet, which we have done. We changed bond funds to longer-term purchases. I think it was, I think I might have said bond purchases. So we've made that adjustment. Are there any questions?
All right, board members, I hope that you've had a chance to review this. Ms. Carpenter, it looks like you wanted to speak.
I'm just saying, send it. Let's get on with it. I'm ready to make a motion.
Anybody else want to add?
Are we, are we sending these two options to the county or do we need to make a motion about whether or not to have the stadium in scope or out of scope?
As written, the motion is the $36,602,000, which includes a partial stadium scope of work.
So the whole schmang?
It's not the entire stadium scope, it was a partial scope, and that's one thing that this board has discussed and had asked previously for it to be included in the project.
But it would give them a functioning stadium to go forward with?
They have a functioning stadium now. What it would do would be to visit the grandstand and the circulation repairs to the grandstand, ADA accessibility.
If Ms. Carpenter would like to make the motion, I'll second the motion.
I'm making a motion to send forward this on to our county commissioners and then that does give them the option to look at that and they can decide what they can do with it. So I make that motion to forward this to our county commissioners, to send that to them.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussion points?
Was it last month or the month before they asked us to delay sending them that information? Do you remember why that was?
No, they never asked us to delay.
Because it was on our agenda for last month to do the same. We wanted to wait till the 60%. Is that the issue?
Yes, yeah, let's wait for the 60%.
So we have the 60% and it basically doesn't change the price saw that much, does it?
That's correct.
So, and we still have, it funded at what, 13? What do they have towards this project? It's 13,000 or 13,000?
They had earmarked 22.
So we have 22 million towards the project?
They've earmarked.
13 and a half, I believe, is what was originally allocated.
So we're in effect here asking for another 20, 20-something million dollars.
Right, but they've, yeah.
I think there's some.
Go ahead, please.
I think there's some confusion about actually how much money they did appropriate. My understanding was they actually only appropriated 2 million and then all the money above that was put in a certain account to be used for capital projects. Is that accurate, as you recall it?
Yes, it was 13,000. Yes, it was 13 and a half million that was to be put into a capital project that the county had set aside. So it was named for Mount Pleasant Middle School. However, that could be adjusted by this particular commissioner.
And so their concern at this point, I believe, is that when the figures were low, when our numbers were low, they might, could have moved forward with cash. But now that this number has grown so large, then they need time to figure out how they're going to finance this. So that's why the delay, and that's why we need to get the number in front of them and let them begin to deal with it.
Okay, so we spent how much to date on the design?
Spent to date over $700,000 on design fees. It's not counted in due diligence.
So we spent $700,000 so far?
Yes.
But we can't move, well, we've got to wait till we figure out how to fund it, is that what?
And we're still continuing with the design. You know, this is a 60% CD phase, so we still have 40%.
Assuming funding was available, when will the project start?
Actually, we would be able to begin the review process. We would have to go to agency review, the announcement of the project, bid period. So really, it's conceivable that the months of April and May could be bid and award periods.
So the school would be able to be opened when?
Well, we have, yeah, certainly, we're going to wait until we get the green light from the county.
Sure.
So whenever that green light occurs, you know, then again, we'll be doing the announcement and the bid period, and expect two months on that. As far as construction goes, certainly, we did want to take advantage of the summer for some certain types of work. But we were expecting a completion in the fall of 2017, early fall of 2017.
So let me, Dave is accurate. If you were to move this project along the way we had originally conceptualized it, which was as of last year, when we were, when the commissioners asked us to go ahead and begin the design process, and we did, and we've gotten to this point. However, the commissioners have to decide what they're going to do. Because not only do they have this 36 and a half million, $36.6 million project, they have the one for Kannapolis, they have the one for RCCC, and they have the one for Royal Oaks. And so they need to grapple with the funding for all of those projects at the same time. What we're doing is we're providing them the front-end information, and then we'll wait for further instructions from them as to whether we continue on the fast track, which is what we'd originally anticipated, or whether we'll slow down the process and wait for them to tell us when to get started.
So we don't want to do what we've done in the past, is request a bond or make it?
All of that will be a commissioner's decision, and they will have to give us direction as to their feelings on this, on this project, as well as a number of other capital projects.
Okay, and then my last question was the road closure. Project's contingent upon the road closure, is that approval process still ongoing, or is that still?
Earlier this evening, the town of Mount Pleasant did approve, five to zero, the right-of-way abandonment.
Okay, so that recommendation goes to the DOT?
NC DOT has already approved their item, too.
So we now have a site, at least we have a site that we can-
There's one more approval, and that's the Board of County Commissioners, March 16th.
So they've got to approve the site, okay. Thank you, Dave, I appreciate it.
And let me just reassure our listening audience. The right-of-way, what's the right term, abandonment? Or, yeah, the right-of-way abandonment doesn't mean that the road is actually closed. The road won't be closed until we have a contractor on hand and the project's actually going to start. So there will be full access to that road until such a time as we're able to break ground for this project. So a lot, when the word abandonment gets used, a lot of people think that there's some misconception in the thinking that that road is now closed, and it won't be closed until we actually have the funds to begin the project and have a contractor in hand that can start the project. At that point in time, there'll be notice given, I'm sure, from Mr. Burnett and his group, about how to actually physically close the road.
So are we, does that maintenance of that road fall on us now, if that happens?
The maintenance falls in on local government, let's just say it that way. And we will work with the county and with the city of Mount Pleasant. And between us, if there are other, if there are maintenance issues, the good- What's nice about that road is it doesn't have a bridge on it, there are not a lot of structural components to it. So it's, and it's a, unless there's some major maintenance issues, somebody comes up and digs a hole through the middle of it, it probably shouldn't have a lot of maintenance issues between now and the time when we do need to do it. Pothole, that would be the biggest maintenance issue, would be pothole maintenance. Did I adequately perform that for you? We have the motion to move forward on the Mount Pleasant Middle School. Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Harrison, so are there any more comments on this? If not, let's go for a vote. All in favor of sending the 60% estimate request to the county commissioners, say aye. Aye. All oppose? All right, so we'll be moving that one forward to the county commissioners, and they will grapple with this issue. 9.4 is the Royal Oaks Replacement Facility. The same-site program and site selection. Mr. Burnett, again, it's back to you, sir.
Thank you. Again, at the last week's meeting, we talked about the size of the school. We talked about the possibility of locating new school on the Royal Oaks campus. The Royal Oaks campus is 18 and a half acres. We feel confident that we can locate a new school on the existing site and keep the brick and mortar in place during construction, come back later and demolish the buildings, with the exception of the 1998 building, which is the primary grades building. The, at the same, at the same meeting, there was discussion about, you know, what size should the school be? There was comments from Ms. Carpenter about 625 students or larger. We do feel that we can accommodate that request. What we're looking at is a 648-student school. The, we did look at schools that were larger than that. As you look at the infrastructure needs, the roads in the area, things like that, there's certainly some questions as to whether we should go with a much, with a larger school, much larger school. So we did look at an 800-student school. We did feel that it did fit on the site, but the 648-student school, certainly one that, in the site selection committee meeting, did well. So the recommendation, the superintendent recommends constructing a 648-student school. And with regard to the site selection recommendation, the superintendent recommends waiting until some information. We did hear some earlier this evening, and you've asked for some additional information. So we're happy to pursue that information.
Well, board members, I need to get a pulse from you on first, on the size of the school. So let's first tackle that. And if we build it on the same site, what size do we want to do? So do we want to go with the recommendation? What did you say it was?
648 students.
Yeah, I didn't see it written in here, that's why I was, there it is, there it is, at the very bottom, okay. 648, or do we want to stretch it a little bit farther? So I'll open the floor to some discussion. Dr. Phillips?
So, yeah, I think Barry and I were just doing the same thing, doing some calculations. If we use the extra space as a surge capacity to allow us to renovate other smaller elementary schools in the Concord area, we would need 675 if we temporarily put Beverly Hills, 675 students. If we temporarily put Beverly Hills at the new Royal Oaks location while we renovate Beverly Hills. We'd need 600 if we put our Brown McAllister there. And then we would need 804 if we put Coltrane Web there and renovated that site. What I'm wondering is if, so we're not proposing to tear down the, what is currently the kindergarten and first-grade building at Royal Oaks. And I think the idea is that eventually, that could be used for pre-K or some other programming. But we could also use it temporarily as kindergarten and first-grade classes while we bring another school temporarily there. And so I'm wondering how many students, how many classrooms are in that?
There's eight classrooms.
Eight?
Yeah, and so they're already designed at the kindergarten, first-grade level, so you could house any grade, any elementary school.
Right, so, and typically, we have 20, is that right?
Well, we use a design number of 21 for K through 3, and we use 26 for 4th and 5th grade.
All right, but if we just say 20, that's another 160 students we could accommodate, at least temporarily. Which, if you add that to your 648, that's 808 students. We've got space for four extras if we break Coltrane Web. This is just, boy, talk about designing exactly to the, okay, okay, you sold me.
Any other questions on that? I have one, if no one else has one, on that. Would the cafeteria be able to compensate? And I guess the cafeteria is designed for your core capacity with three lunch periods. Is that what you normally use? So if you wanted to stretch it to a fourth, well, I said, I guess in elementary, we try not to stretch those to four lunch periods, is that correct?
Well, it doesn't work that way in elementary school. But we do, we do size them for three lunch periods, so we divide the population by three.
So I wonder what that would do to it if you just had a little bit more space to handle the cafeteria flow? I know you wouldn't need a bigger, a larger kitchen, but to-
We certainly can design the core for 800-student core.
I was just thinking, just for the cafeteria, not so much for the whole core. But, okay. All right, board members, the second part to this, since there are no more questions about it.
So you're, what makes you sure that we can fit this school on this site? I mean, that seems like a significant size.
So certainly, as you've heard me say numerous times, you know, we, to nail it down, we would like to have the survey complete and then be able to work from that. However, we have worked with the GIS information, aerials, we've, you know, superimposed other schools on top of the site, and we feel that, you know, we've got adequate room to be able to do that, to be able to handle the parking needs, the stacking and circulation needs, the bus parking needs. We think we have some viable options to pursue.
And I appreciate the work that you're doing. I've done the same type of overlay, and I don't see any way that you're going to fit a school and continue to operate the school on that same site without impacting the students substantially or having to purchase some additional land. You've got a floodplain there, right? I mean, you have floodplain, you have woods, you have-
On the edge of the property, yes.
Adjacent property owners? Yeah, I just, to me, it's difficult for that size of a, for students. And I don't think that road is designed for, you know, twice or three times the capacity that-
As far as Dakota Street, we've talked with the city. The expectation, and what they've told us, is that we would need to expect to improve Dakota Street on our frontage. And the improvements have already happened southwest of our property, sorry, west of our property. And it includes curb and gutter, it's a widening of the street and sidewalk. All of those are very manageable.
You just have about 90% of the population of that school has to go out towards the highway to get anywhere. So you're going to stack them up that way to get out?
So as we would go through the design process, we would do what's called a TIA, which is traffic impact analysis. From that, we would get recommendations from a consultant that would be telling us. And they would be telling NC DOT what issues we should expect and what solutions we can have. I think one of the ones that was actually mentioned in the site selection committee meeting was the expectation of putting a signal at Dakota and Highway 29. And it's a reasonable expectation. Of course, we have to talk with NC DOT and with the city, which we've already made that contact. We don't have a response yet. And it's very early in the process. But we think that there's already turn lanes at that intersection, which is a good thing. You know, very well could be that we add a signal.
And then my other concern is again, you know, where are we going to get the students for this? And I understand the thought process about the flex space, but that's not happening anytime soon. I mean, we, there's, we just went through all these needs about funding that the county has to deal with. There's no funding for replacing all these inner-city schools. That's going to sit empty for a while. I think the need is the growth, and we're going to be coming to the county and saying, "Hey, we've got all this growth out here in Harrisburg and Cox Mill area, and we've got to address that solution." And that's a priority as well. So I don't see a large school at that location as the best option for us. We have, you know, a bond, an approved bond for $11 million. I mean, is there something we can do besides, you know, replacing the whole school? I mean, I think maybe with the cafeteria, it's not in a bad, bad shape. Replace the administration part, add new classrooms behind it that we can make it smaller for $11 million and keep the same population there. That's, I think, would be better served.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Carpenter.
All right, I'm going to disagree with my honorable Mr., and we're getting good at doing this, because I've been here a lot longer and I've seen a lot of things. First of all, how big is our site at Wyancoff? Was it not about the same size, 18 acres?
It's 19.
About the same thing? We built a school on that site with the children on that site, and then we tore down the building. We didn't disturb those children at all while they were on that site, and then we tore down the building, and the children were on that site. And with the same site as Royal Oaks was. And the school, after the school was built, then we tore it down. So we've done it, it's been done, and it was the same-sized site, so it can be done. Secondly, you say, "Oh, the school's going to sit there with no children in it." Well, we can do like we did at Odell when it got crowded. What did we do? We moved kids to Boger, which had spots. And now we're going to move them back when Odell's right. So if we've got seats there, and we've got real overcrowding, and we haven't got the money to do there, well, what we could do is we could take those children that are overcrowded, and we haven't got the money yet, they could be moved there. Then we could, and promise those children like we did with, that we moved to Boger, that we're in the farms, we told them, "Okay." When the redistricting was done, we said, "Okay, when Odell gets built, we're going to move you back." We told those children in the farms area, "We're going to move you back when we get Odell done." But the thing, when you do that, you make a promise, you better keep it. And that's what you've got to do. If you move those children to Royal Oaks, you know, for temporary, you've got to remember your promise, you're going to move them back. And then, when we get the money to do Beverly Hills, then move them in. But the main thing, you make your promise, you keep it. You're going to move them back, because those parents are going to remember that. So when you make a promise, keep it.
Oh, I appreciate your history on that. I just don't see, on the north, on the north side of our county where the growth is not happening, I don't think I'd be busting people all the way across. But, you know, again, that's something we need to look at all options.
All right, board members, we've talked about the capacity of the school. Now we have to talk about the site. Is there, oh.
I would like to see an overlay with some measurements and just some rudimentary measurements. All I've seen so far is an overlay with just a footprint. And it's at least not to the point where I feel comfortable knowing that school is going to sit. And the overlay I saw was one where the new building sat on top of parts of the old building. So to stack the construction process while a school is going on, that seems to be a little bit of a stretch according to the overlay.
be a little bit of a stretch, according to the overlay that I saw.
Right, and that overlay actually was prior to the board's direction on, you know, keeping the, the brick and mortar intact. And so we have worked on sketches. And again, they're, they're sketches. So it's a, it's a little difficult to be putting measurements on it, but certainly we, we can show you, you know, later versions, different options.
So point of clarification, we're spending a lot of time asking, you know, what is, is the Royal Oaks site the right site? But as I understand it, superintendent is not asking us to decide where to put it tonight. They're only asking what size of a school do we want to build? And I assume you want that because you want to get start, get the architect started on coming up with some preliminary drawings. And if we conclude, maybe you do the soil samples at the Royal Oaks and you go, oh, this is not going to work here, then we know, all right, now we've got to, you know, look, look more diligently at other sites, as I know you are already doing. Am I understanding what you're asking is not to vote on a site, but only a size of the school?
Dr. Shepherd.
I think the review that you received in closed session tonight is what's referred to in the last section with regard to the site selection recommendation the superintendent recommends, waiting until after the board hears the information related to the alternative sites. I think that information was presented tonight. And so I'm hoping that we're getting close to making a decision as to where it would be.
We, we had no time to review, to kind of digest in, you know, in a cramped closed session. I, I would personally like more time to review that information and be able to, to slow down and look at it closely.
Yes, sir.
And if that's the board's wish, I would recommend that you not determine the size of the school then, because you'll build, you won't build a six hundred and forty-eight member school on another site. You'll build it, you'll probably build a larger school then.
Yeah, I agree with Dr. Shepherd and Vince as well. I think we need to kind of slow down a little bit. I mean, I would personally like to know the site before we look at how big it's going to be. I mean, that would, to me, that would affect my decision.
By the next meeting. But we need to move on because of our timeframe. Is that not correct? Is that not correct? We need to do that for that bond money?
Certainly, we have some, some time at the, at the end of the design phase that we, we do need to hit some dates. Right now, what I'm really hoping to do is to be able to put a contract together and get that for the board, you know, to approve on, on the design side. And it, you know, what we don't have is, what are we designing? You know, is it...
Did we get the money that we had asked for?
Can I answer that question for you? The eleven million dollars that the bond money, it goes back to the whole package of projects that the commissioners are dealing with. The eleven million bond money doesn't quite make, meet the price for this school that we just grossly estimated at seventeen point six million, and we don't really know what that, then we estimated it was more than that. Then we have the thirty-six point six million for Mount Pleasant. And then there is the short-term financing that they guaranteed to Kannapolis for twenty-three million dollars that's not even a part of us. And then there's the twelve million dollar project for RCCC that they got a nine million dollar bond for. So when you start adding up all the numbers, the commissioners didn't have nearly the bond money to take care of the requests that were coming down, and they know that they need. So right now, it's up to them to how they want to do the financing. So the eleven million is out there, it's an option in their toolbox to use, but, you know, we're not going to hold them hostage on that eleven million, because this doesn't complete the project anyway. But we do need to move forward in a appreciable amount of time, because they had stated that they would like to have all of the information about this project to them by next March two thousand and sixteen, which means we have to have our i's dotted and t's crossed probably in the January, February timeframe. And that, and we need to be out for bid for that by then, so that they can have their estimates and numbers for how they're going to package all of this, all these capital needs.
But we had to have some money to do some, to deal it, that's what I was referring to, to do, to do, what was it, thirty thousand to do?
That's correct.
Soil and stuff, that was what I was referring to. Excuse me if I didn't make myself...
Oh, yes, we, we've already sent that up to commissioners.
Yeah, but have we got, have we gotten that? That's what I was referring to.
It's in this March meeting cycle. So we've presented, we presented last week and next week.
Okay, so we haven't received that. That's what I was referring to. So we can't do any kind of, anything yet until we get that. So that's what we're waiting on. Okay.
So if we do not make a decision on the location tonight, what are the next steps? And what time do you think you can have a contract to us? And what does that do to your timeline?
I think what I'm going to do is to create a contract that is a, you know, A, if it's six hundred and forty-eight students, and B, if it's seven hundred and eighty-four students, and C, if it's on the, the site, and D, if it's on another site, there'll be a little bit of a cafeteria plan, you know, but, you know, we'll, we'll get there.
Okay. All right, board members, do you want to table this discussion? Or do you want to, do I have a motion to move forward?
I'll move to retable this discussion until next month's meetings.
All right, I have Dr. Phillips tabling it. Either Rob or Vince, both, I heard both of them same time. So Rob and Vince both seconded it at the same time. And so all in favor, or any more discussion? All in favor of this motion?
To April.
Yes, all in favor of this motion to table this to an April, our April meeting? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that motion is carries. All right, nine point five is...
You want to thank Crystal and Molly, the principal and assistant principal for being here. Crystal, break.
Crystal and Molly.
Thank you all for coming tonight and enduring all of our chatter. There, Crystal and Molly are, Crystal is the principal and Molly is the assistant principal at Royal Oaks. They have a vested interest in our discussion, and we are not forgetting about you. You are number one on our list. We're just trying to figure out how we're going to get there to get you exactly what you need for those students there. And we appreciate all the hard work and labor you do there. Thank you again. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Board members, an easy one, nine point five. Mr. Walter wants to attend the NSBA annual meeting. I need a motion to approve.
Second.
David Harrison motions, Dr. Phillips seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, now we have our final motion, nine point six. This is the discussion of the Northwest Cabarrus Matching Fifty-Fifty Grant. And I would like Ms. Beaver to please come down, and you can help us with this. And I've also, I have Chuck Taylor in readiness if I need him to. Thank you. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you. I do have some pictures, because I just love showing stories and needs in pictures. So if I can pass those along, that should help support what we're going to talk about this evening. A picture tells a thousand words. Would you like me to just talk about, about what we're, okay?
If you could kind of just, you know, talk about what your issues, what, what the problems are that you see, and then what you think the scope of work is, and then that will help us get grounded.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful.
Because I think all of us have received emails about this, and so I want to refresh it.
Yes, probably way too many emails. Okay, so my name's Angela Viver, as Mr. Shoemaker said. I'm a parent volunteer at Boger Elementary, Northwest Middle, and Northwest High. And the, I've come and spoken to you all before, with the exception of the few new faces up here. So I am here today to speak to you about our team's request to write a grant. Our team's made up of volunteers and staff at Northwest High School and Middle School. We submitted on February sixth the required permission to write a grant information. And today is March ninth. So we are extremely anxious to begin, because the grant that we're asking you about tonight is due on March thirtieth. So there's a whole lot of work to be done between now and then, if we can get your support. Last year, Cabarrus County Schools supported the initial resurfacing work at Northwest Community Track and Field Facility. That repair and rubberizing work was primarily funded using funds collected by our volunteer team, including the Jimmy Johnson sixty-five thousand dollar grant, about thirty-two thousand dollars of a Cabarrus Parks Matching Grant, thirty-five hundred dollars from Cabarrus Health Alliance Grant, and then the balance of that was donations from our Northwest families, for a total of just over a hundred and two thousand dollars that we collected. And we're very proud of that number. We're very proud to have been able to help Cabarrus County Schools raise that kind of money, since both of our schools have an economic base of about fifty percent free and reduced lunch. So fundraising can really be a challenge for our school syst, our school campus. At the ribbon cutting and community meeting at Northwest Middle School in September for the track, it was a very rainy day, as you will all remember. And as discussed by Cindy Furtinbaugh and myself during that meeting, we talked to you a little bit about our next step. Our team now seeks to protect the investment that we made last year and to make that track accessible and safe and more usable to the students and to the community. In addition, the second phase of work that I'm going to talk to you about in a little bit will help the facility also become an income generating facility with track meets and other events. Since no actions really came from that September community meeting, and to assist in the continuation of the track and field facility work, our grant team is requesting this permission from the board and from Cabarrus County Schools to submit a grant, to write the grant, to do all the work, and provide you all the information that you need to the NFL Grassroots Foundation to win another fifty thousand dollars for this project work. We would be writing this grant under the NFL Grassroots Foundation. They actually offer two different grants. The part that we would be working with would be the general field support grant. The maximum amount that you can request for this grant is fifty thousand dollars. They do also offer a two hundred thousand dollar grant, and that is for artificial turf. The only people that won that grant from the whole state of North Carolina last year was CMS. They won two hundred thousand dollars, which is also a matching grant, and put in artificial turf at West Charlotte High School. We just want fifty thousand dollars. So we're hoping to write, to get your permission to write that grant. We have actually already earned sponsorship approval from the Carolina Panthers, which is one of the grant components. You have to have an NFL team that is willing to support your efforts and your work to try to earn that funding. And they have told us that they do indeed support our efforts to try to win the grant. We also feel very confident that the combination of these three areas that I'm getting ready to give you will make our grant a top contender for earning this money. Number one, we are a high-use facility, as you all know, in a low or moderate income area, that as you all know, we have about, well, we do, we have over two hundred thousand high school and middle school students that use this track and field facility for PE classes and clubs, fitness Fridays, and other outdoor events. Plus, these numbers kind of throw me, because I can't believe this many athletes are out there. We have a high school, junior varsity, and varsity soccer, middle school soccer, middle school football, high school football, middle school track, high school track. We have Pee-wee groups, and also alumni football groups totaling four hundred and eighty athletes that are using this one practice field in the condition that you see on those pieces of paper. So that is what shows that we are a high-use facility. Second is the major need for repairs, and that's obvious in the pictures that I gave you, the second phase of work. And then thirdly, and we're very proud of this, that our track facility and walking track is open to the community and will remain open to the community, so that in the morning when you drop off your middle schooler, you'll always see people out there walking after they've dropped their kids off. And on the weekends, you'll always see people out there playing soccer or walking the track, playing football. So our track is those three things, high use, in need of repairs, and also available to our community. And I'm taking those three things, those proponents, straight off of the NFL grassroots thing, paper thing, paperwork that says that strong preference will be given to proposals that list those three items in addition to a few other items, which we also meet. If the grant has won, the school system, like the majority of other NFL grant-winning school systems, would need to match the fifty thousand dollars that our grant team would like to win for you, giving us a total amount to work with of a hundred thousand dollars. Those funds would provide, in order of priority, ADA entryways to our track facility. And you can see the dire need of that in the pictures that I've given you. Adequate fencing, including lockable wide gates and pedestrian turnstile-type entry to protect the field and track surfaces. A few months ago, we had an incident of a dad outrunning on the track while his ten-year-old son in a mini ATV, or, you know, the little Jeep vehicles that kids use, running donuts on the track surface, the brand-new hundred thousand dollar track surface. So there is a need to fence and protect the surface and the investment that we've put out there. Thirdly, bleachers on a concrete ADA pad to enable students, spectators, and just income generating events. You can see from the bottom-left corner picture, the main community entry, the limited parking space that we have is just kind of some gravel in that area, and you have to kind of cross the river that you see there, and then step up the foot to get up onto the track. And that's the parking that is right at the track. Space there to pave about nine or ten spaces. The rest of the parking for that track would have to be probably in the lower high school parking lot, which is a little further away. But that area pictured would at least provide us with ten spaces of paved parking, or at least more, more conducive parking area, even if it's not paved. And then lastly, a basic, basic restroom concession building, and this is all as funds allow. We realize that that hundred thousand dollars will not stretch that far, but we like to dream big. So in conclusion, once again, we're just asking for approval to write another grant to attempt to win this fifty thousand dollars to keep the project progressing. The hundred and two thousand dollar investment roughly from this summer, the rubberizing and the repair of the track that's already been done, must be protected. And the entryways must be ADA accessible and safe. All of the items I mentioned impact a huge number of students and community members. So once again, we just ask you to please help us make this track and field facility accessible and safe and usable to our community by allowing us to write this grant and have our efforts as a grant team validated with a supporting match from CCS. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I am happy to give it my best shot.
Thank you, Ms. Beaver.
You're welcome.
Board members, you've heard her presentation. Are there any questions that you'd like to ask her at this time? Ms. Carpenter?
Well, our current policy does not allow this. Is this correct? Because basically, our current policy, they have to have the money to match it. Is that correct? Is that the way our current policy is? Because the way our current policy is, if, if a, if organization wants to write a grant, they have to have the matching money. Is that correct?
I know.
I know, but I mean, the way our current policy, I know! But the way our current policy is, does the organization not have to have the current money to do that?
Ms. Carpenter, we currently don't have a policy that directly addresses this situation. It's something we're working on, actually, at this upcoming March Policy Committee meeting.
Okay, so we don't have some. I mean, what we've got now is somebody would have to have that. What does our current policy say? So we can't do that as it, as it stands. I mean, because to me, if we were going to do something like that, we have to have something place, something in place, or have a pot of money to cover it. Because what we do for one person, we, we got all these schools out here, and what we do for one, we would have to be able to do for everybody. Or have a pot of money to say, okay, we're going to set a hundred thousand, or we're going to set something aside to be able to do that for everybody. Because what we do for one, we got to do for everybody.
So you all currently don't have a policy in place that would address the situation, and so you're neither prohibited nor denied for it.
Ronnie's going to come up here and tell me what we got in place. Tell me what we got in place, Ronnie.
We don't have a policy...
We don't have a policy. What we do have are some guidelines that we put in place about two to three years ago to help our schools and organizations within our schools navigate the grant-writing process. And one of the items in the guideline states that if they are applying for a matching grant, that they need to have those funds already secured, either through their school or through some other means, so that they aren't obligating the school system to match that grant if they win the grant.
Okay, that's what I, I thought we had something that said something similar to that, and that's where I'm coming up with, so we've got something like that in place.
Right, and that's for internal grants. So, if someone affiliated with the school, if a teacher wanted to write a grant for a classroom.
So, that doesn't apply to someone like that?
And this is a, this is a community group wanting to write a grant. And so, we currently have parameters in place for internal grant requests. This would be an external community grant request, which is why we, it's a bit of a blank piece of paper for us to work on.
Right, and all the other grants that we've written now, I've written probably 10, 15 grants for Bogart Elementary and then for Northwest High School with Cabarrus Parks last year, and all of those, we did have the funds to match. This is a larger grant. It's for continuing the project because, I guess, we were hoping last year, when we came up with $102,000, that we would have more support to make everything ADA accessible and all of those features that we felt would protect the investment for the school system. And when that didn't happen, we just looked for other opportunities to help you all to get the project done so that the surface is protected and we can let all of our students get easily on and off the track. So, that's kind of why this is a little different than, than all the other past grants that we've written where we have had the funds upfront, and it's a large grant.
And one of the things, and I'm glad Chuck kind of come up, because I know that on our, I'm on the Budget Committee, and I know a lot of things doing with ADA require, I mean, you know, with, throughout the school, and I'm looking at this, and I'm wondering if any of these things, she showed me all these lovely pictures, and she's saying ADA, that this doesn't go with ADA. Are any of these beautiful, you see his lovely, her lovely pictures? Are any of these things on our, all those many, many pictures that we saw during Budget Committee, are any of these things on the, on those sheets that we saw during budget time?
The answer to that is yes, ma'am. The ADA access to the track is actually on the large project list.
How far down the project list is, you know, do you remember? Is it way down there, or is that, is that close up? I know that we were knocking those things down, so, and do you remember where it, ah, there he is. I know this man.
I don't know by memory, but I, the ADA access to the track is on the large list. It did not make the top 37.
It didn't make the top 37? Well, it's easy under safety.
I believe that the restrooms are also on the list.
Is it on the list, too?
Maybe not under the category ADA. There were several restrooms for athletic facilities.
So, we do have it on there, so those are on there.
I believe that restroom facility is on there.
So, we got the restroom on there? Because one of the things, if we start, and that's where we've got to figure out, if we do for one, how can we do for all? And if we're going to put a policy in place, how can we put the policy in place? Because we've got to be fair. If we come and give you $50,000, if we put something in place, we've got to be all-inclusive. Where if we're going to put a pot of money out there, we've got to be able to put a cap on it, where we get the best bang for our buck, and we've got to be able to do as much as we can with that pot. And we've got Kelly over there that's going to say, "Now, I've got a cash flow problem, and there's only so much that I can give." And we've got to say, "Okay, if we give this $50,000, what's it going to do to our fund balance? Can we do it? Do we have it?" And that's where we've got to know if we've got it available. So, that's, that's my question. Kelly, what's this going to do to it? Do we have $50,000 that we could free up? And that, that's, that would be my question.
There is, there is one for, where did I find it here? Resurfaced track, partial funding, $40,000. It was at Northwest High School.
Did you see the bathrooms?
Oh, practice field asphalt track, $230,000. So, I'm assuming that it goes into that line item. That's probably the one. And that was showing 2017-18, which obviously is too late for the year.
If I may just comment, the $230,000 figure was with some very creative thinking in how we would actually address that issue. So, it's kind of a combination of some paving and some concrete sidewalks.
When you were looking at this figure, where were y'all coming up with your figures from?
Which figures were those?
The hundred thou, I mean, looking at all this stuff, you were thinking $100,000 was going to do all this stuff?
Oh, no, no, no. Like I said, is this one? I can't really hear myself talking. Okay. No, like I said, the, that is a dream big list, obviously, and that's why it's prioritized. Obviously, the first item on there is the ADA entryways to the track. That's the highest priority. And then, as the money lasts that we've won from this grant, we would just knock off as many of those items as we could and then find another grant or another way to fund the rest of it as, as, you know, as we're able.
Mr. Chairman, have we identified one, there's a $90,000 line item here for restrooms, storage concessions facility at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Is that germane to this discussion?
Yes, sir, that's the restrooms that we were speaking of earlier.
Okay, for the, for, nope, sorry.
All right, Dr. Phillips.
Okay, for, for the sake of trying to move to a decision, I think if you go through this entire list, what you will find is that all of our high schools have a lot of needs in the athletic facilities area. You also will find that they are typically not at the top of the priority list because, rightly so, we're addressing a lot of issues with the classrooms and the educational facilities. However, I think that we should create an incentive to our boost organizations to help them raise the money to fulfill some of the needs that we have for our athletic facilities. I don't think we can just give $50,000 to Northwest. I think we have to make a pot of funds available for matching grants for each of our seven traditional high schools. So, within that in mind, my proposal is I move that we create a matching grant fund of $350,000 with $50,000 reserved for each of our seven traditional high schools, and that that money will be used to match donations from community organizations that want to provide capital improvements to our, to our high schools, and with rules to be determined by the Policy Committee as, in a following meeting.
I, I, I respect you, but don't you think we need to check with our finance person to see?
Let's see if I can get a second, because if I can't get it, I can't get a second there. We don't even need to check with Kelly.
I would second it, Dr. Phillips, if it were a proposal to study such a fund or a, an arrangement such as what you outlined there.
It sounds like a study won't address the March 31st deadline.
No, it will not.
Mr. Fehr?
Yeah, I just want to briefly say something. You know, we've made a conscious effort in the past of...
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Did you want to second his motion?
Not yet.
Okay, all right, so I'll let you talk. Are you going to?
It sounds like it's going to die.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. Anyway, what I was trying to say, previously, we've made a conscious effort on, in the past, I know on the previous board, to take a look at our older schools. And, you know, I'm one of the guys, I played on Northwest Fields 40-some year, yeah, 46 years ago. So, I know how long those facilities have been there. And I know we've made a conscious effort in the past. We built them a new gymnasium, which they definitely needed. We've done repairs on their stadium, which they had to have. And, you know, we've done things at Concord, things have been done at Central, and I'm always in favor. You know, we've talked about the seven traditional schools and that, I mean, high schools, and yes, we do, but we've got three that are in dire need of a lot, and that's Northwest, Central, and Concord. Now, based on all of that, talking out of my head, where are we going to come up with the money? I mean, I'm like you, David. I support the fact that if they're going to, the community's putting a lot of effort in trying to get things done for their, for their community because there's no funds there. So, we need to come up with some kind of plan to help them, just like you're suggesting. But what I'm afraid of, when we do, we throw that $350,000, and next week, we're going to have six more high schools grabbing, you know, writing grants, which is not bad.
That's my intent.
Yeah, which is not bad.
Because it has to be matching.
Right, which is not, not a bad idea. So, like I said, I'm in, I'm in favor of doing anything to help the, especially the older schools.
Yeah, but we've got middle schools out there. I look at Harrisburg Middle, and I'll, I would...
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. Look, Dr. Phillips has a motion out here, and his motion is to establish a $350,000 fund for matching grants for the high schools. And, you know, he's not, he's not saying whether it's athletic or whatever, but he's made this motion. Is, does anybody want to second that so we can have more discussion?
My offer is second if it is kind of a, asking the Cabinet to, friendly amendment to ask the...
I have to have, I have to have a motion first before you can be friendly.
If I can't get a support, then I withdraw that motion. I make a second motion that we allocate $50,000 towards a matching, and reserve it towards a matching grant to support the Northwest Community Track and Field Project contingent on their being successful, their grant application to the NFL Grassroots Foundation.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion from Jeff, Dr. Phillips, excuse me, and a second by Mr. Harrison on to establish a $50,000 fund or establish $50,000 worth of funds for a matching grant pursuant on that grant being successful. Is that right?
I don't understand what you're, you're just giving it just to them. So, you're ignoring all the other schools, and they haven't raised $50,000.
I tried, I tried a motion for all of the schools. It failed. So, now I'm trying one for Northwest.
But you don't know whether our finance person has that money. You haven't checked.
Kelly, what is our current fund balance?
Our current fund balance consists of dollars that came from operating. It's not intended for the purpose of capital.
That's not the question I asked. What is our current unallocated fund balance?
I think this board needs to know what the purpose of the fund balance and how we get the money, the purpose of the fund balance is operating, and that's how the money gets paid.
That's not what we've been told in the past. In the past, we've been told that it has to be used for one-time expenses and not for operating expenses such as teacher assistance.
That is not what I have told you.
That is what I was told when we wanted to keep some of our teacher assistance, when we were requested instead to reduce the number of teacher assistance. And we were told we could not use it for ongoing operating expenses, and instead, it had to be for one-time expenses.
You're taking portions of conversations, pieces of those conversations. What you need to know is you need to have the complete conversation so that we all understand what we're talking about.
Did we not just, I'm sorry, Kelly, excuse me, did we not just vote last week?
You're refusing to answer my question. Let's go ahead and have a vote.
I'm not refusing to answer your question. You know as well as I do, and I've discussed with most of the board members sitting here, what our fund balance is and the position that we're in and what we have potential liabilities. And so, the majority of the board members sitting here know that, and you do, too. It's public knowledge, and it's on our website.
And it is certainly more than $50,000.
I just want to add one thing. You're talking about fund balance not to be used for recurring expenses. Did y'all just not vote last week to, to do that on the, the public relations assistance?
Yes, sir.
That's in the budget. I thought we was wanting to go through the budget process.
It would, it's in the budget now. I think the point was made that if you had not done that, that money then could have reverted to the fund balance, but currently, Kelly gave us information as to where that money is within the budget now.
It was, it was found, the money was found because it was not used within the current budget, and it would have reverted back to the fund balance. So, had we not hired that position, it would have ended up in the fund balance. That's correct.
Are there other areas we can do the same thing for the, are there other areas we can do the same thing for this?
Other areas of spending that might be...
My, well, my problem with this is doing it for one and not doing it for everybody else, and not checking to see what we've got. I'm all for if we set up something that was going to be, but what I'm saying is checking and make sure, you know, just automatically saying, "Ooh, we're going to take $350,000. What that's going to do to our fund balance over a long period of time? Nobody's checked this out." And then, you know, we added this at the last minute. We, if we were going to do something like this, we should have had it on our work session and did it at our work session instead of waiting until tonight to do this. That was not done, and I don't appreciate that. And we didn't add it like we normally do, and so this came to us tonight, and I don't, I didn't like that to start with. And like I say, I don't like doing, I love Northwest. My kids graduated from Northwest. I still have my black and orange, and I always do that. And that's what really tears me apart, that, you know, but I don't like doing what I do for one. I want to be able to do for everybody, and that's what's killing me, that not being able to do it. Because when you come, you know, I, we're all about education, and what gets me, I, you know, I see what, like Central, you know, no, no, Central. Here, we've got a, a, no, no, not the turf. I'm talking about the planetarium, which is an educational thing that is, has not been able to be refurbished, that is, and that's a STEM program school that's sitting there not being able to be refurbished, that would educate those students. But then, they're saying, "Okay, we need to put bleachers in, and $50,000 could do, could be, I mean, really start refurbishing that thing." But no, we're wanting to give $50,000 to put bleachers into something also.
Have you had other people that have come to the board asking for $50,000 of matching funds for grant writing by a parent or volunteer organization, or am I just one of other requests?
Oh, don't worry. If we give you $50,000, probably next week, they're going to be lined up down the hall because they're going to say, "You gave $50,000 to Northwest. I can assure you they'll be here." Uh-huh. Because nobody's, no, no, because we'd never give $50,000 to nobody, but when we give it to you, I can be assured they'll come.
And again, I'm really just asking permission to write the grant, so...
Yeah, let me get, if y'all be respectful of your time on the, on the Squawk Box. Thank you, please. All right, Dr. Shepherd?
So, we're in a bind. We don't have the money budgeted. We know there's money in fund balance, but it's not in the right account. If we do it for one, you're right, we have to do it for all. But I would say, if we're ever going to make an exception to this rule, now would be the time to do it. Because I think you gave us maybe over $100,000 that you've already written grants for and raised for that project, and you're wanting to write another grant for $50,000. What I would suggest we give consideration to doing is finding a way to support Ms. Beaver in this project and then turning her loose on six other schools to say, "Help us do the same thing for these..." Because I... same thing for these, because obviously, you're talented, you have a knack for writing successful grants, and we need more funding. So that's mine.
Can she promise that?
Can, can I speak for a minute? Um, I actually spoke to several of the A.D.s at one of our budget sessions to ask who else was writing grants. And they said that they cannot get people to write grants because they, they don't have people who are interested. They've actually, they saw the success at Northwest, and, but they don't have any parents that are really interested in pursuing grants at this time. And then I mentioned if we were to have a pot of money, what would you think? And he said, well, the, the two that I were talking to said, well, we might, we might see some interest at that point if there was really a, a kitty of money that would, would be out there for grant writing, not just for athletics, but for anything. Right now, Ms. Beaver has, has explored a new avenue of getting funding for our, our district. I put this on the agenda tonight, not so much to create a stir, but this needs to be addressed, one way or the other. And if, if, if we need to table it to next week because you're discomfort, you're uncomfortable with it, I don't have a problem with tabling it to next week. But I wanna have a good discussion right now, I mean, not next week, the nineteenth. And I don't know if that would give you enough time to pull together a grant on the nineteenth of this month.
Uh, the nineteenth and then have it mailed in by the thirtieth? Approval the nineteenth for the math?
Yeah, it would, well, it would be, we would table this, and then we would have another discussion on this issue on the nineteenth. That's one option that we have available to us board members if we want to continue this discussion. Right now, we do have a motion before us to establish a fifty thousand dollar matching grant pursuant to, upon the grant being successful. Also, we do have, going to the policy committee, a policy to deal with this specific issue. Dr. Phillips raised it in, in an email several, several weeks ago, to deal with this specific issue, and that is, I think, part of the March Policy Committee meeting. So, board members, we will actually see that policy possibly as early as April, do you think, or? Yeah, so, so...
If, if the committee likes my draft.
Yeah. So, so we would see it for the first reading, which means the second reading would be in May, and then, you know, hopefully by, in the May, it'll be all right. But still, there's a, a contingency. How do you, how do you deal with it? Do you create this pot of money? Is it over a period of time? Because Dr. Phillips had recommended a one or two, two or three-year period that this money would sit there, and if no one crafted against it, then after a two, three-year period, then it would go away, or... So, there's some logistics in the policy that we haven't seen at this point. However, here we are on the, on the, in the bleeding edge of something different, and we ask people to constantly think out of the box. And here's, here's an individual who's thought out of the box, who's got a hundred thousand and a hundred and two thousand, I think you said, for our district and for facilities maintenance. And guess what today I saw? I saw about two hundred track kids or students at Northwest trying out for track today. And they are going to hold a track meet for the first time since my children were in school there in two thousand. So they're gonna have their very first track meet this year. So how many years is that? Somebody do some arithmetic for me. That's fifteen years.
And that's not only a track meet, that's the middle school conference meet. So that's a big meet.
Yeah. So it's a conference meet. And right now, from what I understand, we have to go to Rowan County or somewhere else to have the, or Mount Pleasant, to have these meets.
Right. Our, our athletes, and this is not just Northwest kids, this is all of the track athletes. Six of the eight track meets that are scheduled for Northwest this year are actually in Rowan County. The only two that are in Cabarrus County are Mount Pleasant schools. And you pay five, six dollars a head for spectators coming into a track meet, plus concessions, not the scale of a football game, but it's better than sending all those parents and all those athletes from all those Cabarrus County schools to Rowan, um, track surfaces.
All right. Thank you. Now, we have a motion before us. Is there any more discussion on this specific motion to establish this fifty thousand? Mr. Powell?
The, uh...
Harrison, I'm sorry, I told you you could...
That's perfectly all right, sir. I was trying to hold, hold my back, hold myself back. But what's going on here is that Ms. Beaver has the talent, the skills, the good faith, the track record to, uh, uh, proceed with this, uh, grant. There is, um, no risk in the sense that if she doesn't get the grant, we would not be able to then fund the fifty thousand. That's my understanding. But just to say that the, the skill and experience she has in writing grants should, and I know something about grant writing. I, I know that it's not a, a simple form that you fill out and mail in. It's, it's a, it's a craft that takes a lot of care and attention to all the fine details. She has demonstrated that she has that prior experience. She's gonna work that grant very aggressively and assertively. And I feel good that you'll do your best to make that grant actually come to fruition, and that, um, as Dr. Shepherd said, this, this is an opportunity to make an exception because the need has been so dire for so long. I would like to proceed along those lines, if we could, um, with a future understanding that hopefully Ms. Beaver would be so gracious and, and willing as to share her knowledge with other, uh, uh, schools around our, uh, our system, and, um, serve as a mentor at least, and that at some point in time, we'll have policies in place that we can go forward with, um, that will hopefully be beneficial to you and your processes as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be in favor of this and hope we can just move forward with it so that Ms. Beaver can move forward with her request. Thank you.
Mr. Powell?
First of all, I wanna say that I am absolutely in favor of this, hundred percent. I am also in favor of going through the process that we have followed for other issues that have been in front of this board, some academics, some spending, some, um, hiring positions, et cetera. And it just, the struggle for me is that some, some issues, we compress the timeline, like this one, which is kind of a, a very good one. Sometimes we artificially compress the timeline, so we have to act quickly, and that, that bothers me, and I've voiced my concern about those. But I do recognize the ability to work quickly when you have a good opportunity in front of you. So that's kind of the struggle that I have. And I don't want to open up the floodgates of grant writing requests, but it doesn't seem like that's necessarily gonna be the case. I don't know. I haven't been up here long enough to know what's gonna come at us. Been paying attention, so I don't think that the floodgates are gonna open. But here again, we, we have processes in place, and I argued for that at the work session for our fourth public relations person. We didn't go through any process. We just approved it. And that kinda troubled me a little bit. So that's a little bit kinda where my head is.
Mr. Walter?
So Chuck, as you're saying, these projects that she has on here are something we had, we would, we would be doing at some point anyway. But there's a need, need for these projects that they're on our list to accomplish?
Yes, sir. There's definitely a need.
And they're able to find funding for these projects to get them done ahead of our schedule and at half the cost because we're only paying for, we'd only be paying for half the amount? Is that, does that make, is that making sense? Am I... Or they kinda...
It does, sir, but we, just realize with the amount of money we're talking about, we're only gonna get some parts of it done. So it's not that we're gonna be clearing complete projects off of that project list. We will be clearing parts of the projects.
Which projects can we get at?
I would guess the top. My best guess, based on the estimates that we've had for the other hundred and two thousand dollars in prior years, would be we could probably do all of the ADA entryways to the track, the fencing and the bleachers with the concrete pad. And that may be as far as we can get. But you're the expert on that. I'm just basing it on past quotes that I've seen.
I have a question for Chuck as well.
Okay. So you're saying just the entrance ways onto the track?
The two entryways onto the track, yes. Really just re, just repaving the one area that has the huge hole in the pavement, and that really is the, uh, the main one used by wheelchair students. Um, and then the other one is really just a paved ramp of some kind up to the track surface as well.
Yes, ma'am.
And probably not bathrooms and trucks.
No, definitely not bathrooms. That was just kind of the fifth priority wish list.
Ms. Beaver, if we get, if, if this grant is approved and you, and we receive a hundred thousand, what would happen with that money? Would, would that be for, well, it would be a...
She's telling us, right? She's telling us.
Total of fi, a total of a hundred, correct? Would, would that money then be turned over to Chuck to manage those projects? Or would it be, okay?
Right. And all the grants that I've ever written, we've always tried our best to, whatever rules we have in place, uh, to make sure that we're meeting all the criteria that this school system and the board has. So typically, what happens, just like with Cabarrus Active Living in Parks, just because that's a good working relationship that you all have, and you're probably all familiar with that process, um, an organization wins the funding, and then the check, for example, the Jimmy Johnson check came to the high school, immediately went, um, to Kelly's group in finance, and then a pot was created for the track work using that sixty-five thousand dollars. And as we received more money, uh, through parent donations and other grants, uh, that all funneled straight to Kelly, and then it was managed by Chuck's group. Am I right? Please correct me if I'm, if I'm...
No, you're right.
That's correct. That's consistent with our policy on gifts to the schools.
Mr. Walter?
Think I've lost my train of thought here. Sorry to put you on the hot seat today as well. I apologize. I'm sure you weren't expecting all of this. Uh, the other, I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward for that reason, but I do certainly see an issue with we don't have a policy that covers what we're trying to do. That needs to happen quickly, and I don't know about an amount. I understand the need to stimulate, and that's, that's a good thing. But if we don't have, it probably should go through the budget process somehow and get approved, um, as normal was, instead of, instead of coming out of fund balance. But those are my comments on this.
Ms. Clutz?
And had the board asked me what the appropriate funding source was, which they had not, I would have recommended that we use the maintenance funds because that is what those funds are intended for. So that would be my recommendation, if, if you're interested. Thank you.
I'm interested. I, I make a motion, we use the maintenance funds.
Wait a minute, I have a motion right now. Do you wanna amend the motion? Because it's, the, the current motion is just saying, establish a fifty thousand dollar matching grant pursuant to the grant being successfully awarded. Do you wanna amend that motion?
I wanna amend that motion to state that if they are successfully awarded the grant, that we use maintenance, he's gonna tell me he can or he can't, use maintenance funds to, to match it.
No, he's not. Don't let him, don't let him talk yet.
I'm, I'm just, I wanna, I wanna do it, but I, I'm trying to figure out how.
I have a question about that, what your, what your question is to him. When will we know about the grant? Will it be before the budget cycle is up?
Um, the grant is due March thirtieth, and they'll, uh, they didn't give a specific date. They said that, uh, the winners would know in the spring of the spring, uh, which I assume, I'm guessing, May first. Seems like a good spring date. But there's not a specific date. Um, we could probably contact the liaison that they gave us in the grant paperwork, uh, who we have already made contact with, and get that date for you very quickly.
Yes, sir. If I may, first, I'd like to say I have all the respect in the world for everything that you're doing. I really do. I don't think it's a matter of whether I want to or not. I don't think that we have that kind of liquidity right now in our budget. We have desperately tried to accomplish projects this year. We have completed many projects that were backlogged at this point in time, and I will defer to the CFO to verify whether I'm right or not, but I promise you, I comb these budgets daily. There is not enough liquidity in those accounts for us to give up that kind of money at this point in the year. Okay. If, if she says I'm good, then I'm good. Okay.
What a wise man.
All right. Folks, I have a motion by Tim for, to amend Dr. Phillips'.
I'm yelling. I have a motion by Mr. Fur to amend Dr. Phillips's motion, and that is to use maintenance funds to perform the work for this, well, to perform the funding, to provide the funding for the grant. All right. I need a second if I'm gonna continue on.
Could we amend that motion to say...
I have to first have a second to this motion before it becomes a motion, or do you wanna, huh?
Make it the nineteenth.
I just want...
Friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment.
Okay.
To address issues on the current facility needs list. Just to kinda narrow it down so we don't get a backlog of people at the door. Because it's already on the list, I'm just asking that we address those issues with this money since it's coming from Chuck's budget.
Well, I don't know, understand what that means. Help me understand. I, I wasn't sure if I...
Read what you have, and I'll add something to the end.
Okay, that's it. Here's what I have. I have, first, Dr. Phillips's motion is to establish a fifty thousand dollar matching, um, matching funds pursuant to the grant if it's successful. Then I have using maintenance funds to provide the funding for the matching grant. Tim Fur. And you... Oh, to complete projects that are...
To complete projects that are already on the facilities needs list.
Oh, okay, okay. I see what you're doing. Okay. Already on the current facilities, the two thousand, let's just say the two thousand and fifteen facilities maintenance list. That's specific. Okay. So I need a second, and you seconded it with that, with that friendly amendment. So you have seconded it.
I did, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Board members, you now have a full motion to establish, or we need to vote on this second, I mean, this amended motion. So do you, I need to vote on this amended motion? So, all in favor of using the maintenance funds for providing the funding for projects that are already on the two thousand and fifteen facilities list, say aye? Aye. All oppose? Okay. So that, the amended motion, amendment is carrying. Now we're gonna do the regular motion. We're going back up. And that motion was to establish fifty thousand dollars to match, huh?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think we may wanna, may I propose to wordsmith for you?
You know, you can do whatever you want. Help me because I'm, this blue ink is just getting all over the place.
I, I think if I understand what, what Ms. Beavers has come and asked, asked you for, is she needs a motion from the board to, um, approve her submittal of the grant to the NFL Fund with the understanding that if it's approved, Cabarrus County Schools will provide fifty thousand dollars of matching funds coming from the maintenance budget to support those projects to the extent they are on our current facility needs list. Period. And I really hope Ms. Monroe got that.
Well, that's what we tried to say. That's what Tim said. That's what Tim said.
That, that's kinda what it says.
Mr. Chairman, in relationship to the same thing, I would like to make a motion now that we form a small subscommittee.
Wait, wait a minute, let me just get this motion. We need to get the burden off. So, Ms. Monroe, did you, did you copy? So you got her wording. All right, board members, you all heard Sarah's wording. You've heard all the machinations to get this motion to where it is. Now we just need to call it for question. All in favor of this motion?
I thought that was the motion that you suggested.
Well, we haven't voted, no, I voted on the amendment because...
It would come from the maintenance funds.
Yeah. We were voting it came from the maintenance. Now we're doing the, the full-blown motion. All right, all in favor of this full-blown motion? Say aye? Aye? All oppose? All right. So this motion does carry. Now, Ms. Carpenter, you had something you wanted to add?
Yes, I would like for us to set up a committee to study, basically, what, to set up a committee to study the proposal to have a, uh, grant, fund, set up, made up of a couple of our members along with our finance person, to see if this is feasible for us to do.
Do you need Ms. Beaver on at the podium still?
Can I interject real quick? We have three board members associated with the policy committee.
Yeah.
This will be coming up on the policy committee. What I would like to propose to the board is that those three board members come to this board with your recommendations after you've looked at the policy and had a chance to work that out, and then you can take the bigger picture and talk with Ms. Clutz.
And maybe get, if, if she would like...
And then, and maybe if Angela would like to join us in developing this policy, that would be a, that would be strictly your option.
Well, I'm saying, but we need to check with finance, see what dollar amount would be a good dollar amount. What I'm saying, just randomly saying 350, and two, we just said the high schools. I think we don't need just to say high schools because a lot of our middle schools, because I know numerous times Harris Road has come to us saying, "Our facilities are awful. I don't think we just need to say high schools." That's why I'm saying, I think we need to have a little committee to look at this to say.
But don't you believe that the policy committee is the appropriate place for this? Because you're gonna be developing the policy in the end, so this is where the discussion should be hammered out.
And yes, Mr. Mr....
You think, I mean, I don't know. That's why I was...
We have to at least start with the policy committee, and I think we can dovetail off from that.
Oh, okay. So, you think, bring it up to college? Okay.
Let's just all start doing the heavy work on this.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
Never mind.
I'm sorry. So, that will help us out for this. So, that motion carried, write the grant, and I guess everyone in this room needs to...
I'm all of a sudden feeling a whole lot more pressure writing this particular grant.
You're not gonna get through all that, are you?
And, and I just want to recognize that there were some other guests in the room tonight. We had Delum Broadway, thank you, AP at Northwest, and Madeline Browning. Both of them sat patiently, sending vibes and all to Angela as she's going through this, and I thank you all for coming and enduring our, our conversation tonight. And thank you. Is that your son back there who you also, or?
No.
Nope.
My sons are all in bed.
So, it's just a, a friend. Wonderful. Well, thank you for coming tonight. All right. Board members, that carries us into the final, for a little while, convening in closed session. So, we need to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by a public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to the General Statute 143-318.11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee pursuant to General Statute 115C-319 through 321. All in favor, say aye. Aye. We are now in closed session.